Okay, I'm gonna call to order our special Board of Education meeting, March 20th, 2020, 9 o'clock. Secretary, take attendance.
From what I can see, all board members are present.
Okay. So I'm gonna have a quick speech. So as your Vice President, I just wanted to say to many of you, these are uncharted times, and I want to thank all of you for being patient while we navigate through this. This is the first time as a board we are going virtual for both the community and our board. Please be patient, as this is new to all of us. The reason we are meeting today is to discuss and vote on whether or not we're gonna keep our bond on the May ballot. The reason for this is asking poll workers to gather together in small areas to securely open thousands of absentee ballots is not a safe request, especially given that many poll workers are members of our senior community. Safety is our number one priority, not only for our students and staff, but for our whole community. This is why we've been asked by the Secretary of State, Jocelyn Benson, and all of our local clerk's office to withdraw and postpone our bond to a later date. Each of our board members later on will be asked to make a statement for up to five minutes or less to talk about anything, including what we were going to vote on today, which will be the following. Withdraw the bond for the May ballot, yes or no? Vote on a resolution to put this on the August ballot, yes or no? We have until May 12th to remove this from the ballot, as we as a board will need to see where we are as a country come May. Vote on a resolution to put this on the November ballot, yes or no? We will decide pending on what happens with the August vote, whether we need to vote that as well. If we vote no on all of the above, we will regroup as a board, as we have until May 12th to put the bond on the August ballot. Each of our board members will speak up to five minutes. I will pause before our vote, and I will allow for public comment in order for our team to gather and print off for me, or read from the chatroom, the public comment statements that are in front of me. If anyone has public comment, please consider typing them, so I can read them later on during our meeting. With that, I'm gonna call Jan Roncelli. Come to the podium.
If I could just point out that the closed-
I'm sorry, just point of technical information. Paul, can you lower your mic to be right in front of your mouth, because you're kind of fading in and out? Thank you.
Okay. Is that better?
To note that the closed caption is being done electronic, not by human typing, so some of the words may come up wrong. We wouldn't be putting a bomb, as it said, on the ballot. It would be bond, B-O-N-D.
Okay. All right.
David?
Yes.
David Chalkin?
Yes.
The microphones that both Mark and Paul are using are cutting in and out on the audio. I don't know if there's anything you or Vicky can do about that?
At this time, so you're giving their- ...audio that's going through that system, and so it actually might be a little too loud, and so we'll keep tweaking it, and we'll see how it works, okay?
Okay, thank you.
I'm Jan Roncelli, the Bloomfield Township Clerk, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the members here present, and those of you that are virtual regarding postponing, withdrawing your ballot issue and postponing it to another date. I know the Secretary of State offered an alternative to go all absentee, but that is an unsanitary alternative. Because as you can participate in this meeting virtually, my election workers would not be able to open the ballots virtually. That is a manual task. It is a face-to-face, and whether we had gloves or masks, there are still people that I have to feed during the day, sequester. There are people that will sneeze, people that will cough. They have to eat, they have to use the bathrooms. It is not a way to operate in this crisis that we have, this pandemic that is susceptible to everyone. As your chairperson mentioned, most of my people, at least 50% of them that work in the absentee room, are 60 years old and over, and that doesn't mean that they can't do the job, but they are the most susceptible to this disease. And you should know that all absentee would include sending a ballot application to all of the registered voters in Bloomfield Township, as well as any other community that is in the Bloomfield Hills School District. So that would be about 22,000 ballots, the applications that would go out. I would need at least 30 people in that room, three people at a table, probably 10 tables, to open those ballots up. And I don't have enough room or tables to separate them six feet apart, let alone a place for them, because they're sequestered all day to eat. So I encourage you to reconsider this, and while your ballot issue is certainly important, that you postpone it to a later date when we have this pandemic under better control here in the area. Later, you'll hear from my police chief and my fire chief about the seriousness of this in our community, and the things that we're doing to keep people safe and healthy. Please consider withdrawing the ballot issue at this time and postponing it to a later date.
Thanks, Jan. Any questions from our board? For Jan?
Thank you, Jan, for all you do.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thanks, Jan. Thank you very much.
I want to say the same thing, Jan. Thank you for everything you're doing, and have done, and I know this is a very difficult time, and we really appreciate your service to the community.
Thank you, Jacqueline.
Good morning, and thank you again for taking the time to have this important meeting, and to hear what we have to say, because we do have a perspective that I think people don't realize, and what it takes to run an election. I concur with everything, actually, Paul, that you began the meeting with. You did a great job summarizing, and everything that Jan said. One thing, you know, again, that absent voter counting board is sequestered, and by the sheer number of ballots that would be sent out, or the applications that would be sent out and ballots returned, you're going to take what would likely be a 9% to 13% turnout, and turn it into possibly a 50% turnout. So you are talking a significant number of ballots that we would have to convene in absent voter counting board. Now, I'm in a position where I have fewer precincts affected. However, the message of this whole pandemic has been, it's not just about me. So when I look at my neighbors and my friend Jan Roncelli, who has 11 precincts that would be affected, and would have to convene at least, I think she's almost being, you know, slight on 30, it would be 30 to 50, probably, people needed to run that absentee ballot counting board, and that is a significant exposure of predominantly seniors. I would say of our absentee voter counting board, we're probably 80%, 60 and over. So it is something to consider, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness that you've given this topic. So beyond what's already been said, I don't have much more to add, but I do, you know, would plead with you to consider postponing the election. Thank you.
Board members, any questions for Debbie?
Again, just as we-
Thank you very much for everything you do. I have a child in the district, I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Fire chief?
Thanks for having me here today. I would support Jan and her efforts in this election. I also would say that we're monitoring a lot of the sites regularly, to make sure that we're in compliance with the CDC recommends as far as the number of people and stuff. So some of these sites will be shut down. We're not looking to harass people, or, as Chief Langmire and I talked about the other day, but we have to keep things in compliance with what CDC recommendations are, as well as the safety of the community here. And you need to understand that we are a high-risk community. I think everybody understands that, and I also think that everybody understands that the community is behind us, as we saw in our last millage, and they will take consideration should we postpone this election. We have a lot of things going on right now in our EOC. The last update today was 336 cases that I've seen on the survey board, but as we all know, the testing has just begun on that, so you're going to see a significant increase in that, not to scare everybody, but that we're, what we call in the fire service, the incipient stage of this. The next stage is the free burning, and at that point, we hope we can put this thing out. So I would support any efforts to postpone this as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Police chief?
Thank you for having us in. I concur with both Jan and Chief Moran. We are limiting contact as much as you can, just look at your meeting here. That is next to impossible to do at a voting precinct, when we've got a lot of people in one place at one time. I don't know how we would accomplish that, let alone get the volunteers that are gonna staff this. As Mike says, we are a high-risk community. We have a lot of seniors, and they're the ones that work elections, and we're just not sure we could even staff the polls if you decided so. We're asking that you please postpone this by August. Let's hope that this is over. We'll see. We don't know where it's gonna go, but we are limiting contact with people as much as possible, and this would fall in that same line. So, thank you.
With that, I'm gonna read a statement, and then go to my colleagues if they have prepared a statement before we go through the vote, and then after the vote, we'll take public "As I reflect on the bond, I go back to the original reason why we put this on the ballot in May. We, as a district, are still gonna have $33 million in needs that we need to address, and still have buildings that were built in the '60s that need to be updated. I understand that our country is going through one of the worst pandemics of all time, which has put our economy at a halt. I know people that have already been laid off, as my organization is trying to deal with the fact that our economy has been halted. Our students who have lost so much, especially the seniors, who will never get this time back. I am usually running around from event to event, recognizing our students' accomplishments, and tweeting out these memories. Those memories are gone forever, as I have heard from many families who had to console their students who have lost these precious moments. Even during this tragic state of affairs, our students have put together this statement. We understand that during the time of virtual learning, students may find it hard to get their homework and educational content when needed. Helping Hands, a Student for Students movement, and Bloomfield Student Leadership have organized free tutoring services for students to use if they need to help with their homework or content. There's a Google form that asks students about what subject they need help with, their grade, and the requested date of tutoring, allowing us to properly assign your student with a tutor to help them. If your student would like to sign up to be a tutor, they could sign up for a subject or multiple subjects with the signup genus that they have put together, as these have been emailed to all of our families. During this time in our community, we understand that there may be some difficulties with learning, but we hope that our platform will serve as a means to help alleviate this struggle. I cannot tell you how much I admire these students, who will also be providing a virtual Spirit Week, thinking about the social, emotional of their fellow students as well. For those watching this, all you students are role models for being resilient, and our community is so proud of you. I cannot be prouder, not just of our students, but our teachers, administration, central office, and whole community, who have worked together, whether it was providing these services to our fellow students, food for our community, and to our social, emotional support for each other. I understand that right now may not the best time to be thinking about a bond election, but in these times, all I can think about is how our community has come together, and all I could do as a board member is do what's best for our community. I still feel updating these facilities for our students, parents, and community is what's best, and we'll vote later on to put this on the August ballot, as we can always pull this off the ballot if there are continued safety concerns." I'll go to my left. Mark, do you have a-
We're having this meeting today not because we care more about the bond and money than anything else in the district. We're having this meeting today because of limitations imposed by the law as to timing for when we can take it off, and we're doing this, excuse me, the last possible moment for that. This isn't a time to debate the merits of the bond or anything else. It's obvious, and it should be self-evident, we must take this off the May ballot, and I would support putting it on the August ballot, and then we have time to reassess whether that's prudent, or whether it needs to go beyond there. So I'll be voting to take it off the May ballot, and to put it on an August ballot.
All right. Lisa?
This is Jackie, and I want to, again, say thank you to everyone for their service, and for everything that they're doing during this urgent time. And I also want to thank our students, and especially our faculty. And as a board, due to the absentee and safety, you know, we are using virtual, having a remote meeting this morning, and we can only imagine, only a shadow of what our faculty and our students are going through, as on a much larger scale, they are taking our learning from our classrooms into our remote platforms. So thank you to everyone, and all of our faculty and staff and students for that. I also want to say that due to safety, it's very clear from our experts that we need to remove this from our next election. We will just not be able to do that. But our urgency of our students is also in our buildings, and in our learning platforms. And I can only imagine, as part of what we are doing, is that we need even, this just is an example of increasing the tech support that we need to help our faculty be able to educate our students in this era of online media. So I also think that while we need to remove it now, the urgency for our students, both with our buildings, and our IT, and all the other components that go in to this issue, we need to move it to the August date.
Debbie, do you want to say something? Before I-
Thank you, by our Bloomfield Township Clerk. But off of what, sorry, Chief Langmire said, in terms of getting people to work the absent voter counting board, that's something to be considered. Again, we're assuming what we have to staff them with, but that means we have to get people who are willing to work. And if the state were to go into a shelter in place, which could happen before or after those ballots are mailed, that could very well change the dynamic of being able to get people willing to work that absent voter counting board. Thank you.
Just looking at the screen going, Lisa, do you want to make a comment?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Lisa, do you want to make your statement?
Oh, all right, sure. All right. I'm aware of how frustrating it is to postpone a bond. The very first one I worked on, over 15 years ago, was postponed. It was postponed for an indefinite time, and it was years before another one made the ballot. We are in the midst of a global crisis. Postponing is the right thing to do. I want to be clear that by removing this bond from the May ballot and postponing, I'm not implying or equating this to stepping, to stopping all and any efforts that we can do to ensure that the public is aware of this bond and this plan. There's a lot we can do in the meantime. These are unprecedented times. Given what Jan and Debbie have advised us, and for all the reasons that we are postponing or considering postponing the May vote, I'm against deciding which ballot to put this on, August or November, at this time. I, like most of this nation, is watching and reading all the information I can about the coronavirus. Epidemiologists have no idea how long this will last, or how long social distancing will be the advice that's given. By recent accounts, it's very likely that we're gonna be in a similar or even worse situation in August. I think the worst thing we can do is put this bond on a ballot and withdraw it a second time. It's confusing to the voters. I think it makes more sense to wait until we can be sure of two things. Number one, a fair election, which to me means precinct and absentee voter participation. I want to be, and number two, we have to make sure all the volunteers are safe. Like Debbie just told us, opening precincts and even absentee ballot counting requires an enormous amount of volunteer support, and I don't want to put anyone at risk. I don't agree that it makes any sense to put something on a ballot and then remove it a second time, when it's just as easy to wait and be sure. It's very confusing messaging that we're sending to people when things get put on and off ballots. I know it has to be done in May, we don't have a choice, but I also believe that it doesn't make sense to put something on a ballot that very likely could be removed again in August. So I'm voting yes, remove from the May ballot, and in terms of an August or a November, I'm voting to wait and see.
Pat? Pat, are you there?
Are you there?
Yeah, I'm done.
No, no, I was asking, all right, I'll go back to Pat. Okay, Pat, you want to make a statement?
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. I absolutely agree that it needs to come off the May bond. That's a no-brainer, in my opinion. I'm torn between whether August, or whether to have it placed on the ballot for November. Going with what I think might be best moving forward, if I had to pick one, I would say August for now, knowing that it could come off. I know it could be confusing, possibly to some voters, but that's our job, to make sure we educate everyone. And as a former social studies teacher, the democratic process is something that's very key and integral part of our society, so we would make sure that everyone is informed and knows what is going on and the why to it.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Everyone has been saying pretty unanimously that we should be removing the bond off of the May ballot. One other piece of information we have is, we had a statement from the Secretary of State, Jocelyn Benson, that said the governor urged all local boards to withdraw any ballot proposals they have from May. So not only do we have it from our local officials, but we have it all the way up to the governor of the state urging that we not utilize the May option. In terms of August or November, two things. One, Jason, the society, there is obviously tremendous uncertainty in terms of what's going on with the coronavirus. Things are changing daily, if not even hourly. So the ballot is, the decision, the filing deadline is not until May 12th. That's eight weeks from now. A lot can change between now and May to allow us to decide whether we put it onto the August or not. In addition, when we made the decision to put the ballot, or the proposal, the bond, onto the May ballot, we did that at the end of January. That's about two months ago. At that time, there were, we didn't, there was a lot of uncertainty in terms of exactly all the details of what was in the $200 million. We've had some, two months of feedback coming from the community. We also have some thoughts in different board members, in terms of different elements within the $200 million, not the concept of the rearrangement of the buildings and the general thrust of the bond, but some of the details really should be looked at more carefully. If we vote today to put it back on the ballot, we're locking ourselves in for $200 million, .2 million. I see no reason why we need to do that at today, in the end of March. We've got, as I said, eight weeks to work on the details, and by the time we get to beginning of May, we can make that decision to put it onto the ballot. We can get feedback from the community, both in terms of the town halls that we've had so far, and also possibly doing a poll of the community to find out what they feel about the bond proposal. And as I said, we, as a board, I think, working with the administration over the next few weeks, should be discussing the details. We have a 40-page package that we received after January 30th, which has all the information of building by building, what we would be spending, and I think that deserves the due diligence that we, as a board, are obligated to give it, to really go through that detail with the administration, and figure out exactly what we want to put on either the August or November ballot. In addition, there are other school districts that are in the same situation. I've been in communication with them, South Line in particular, and Wald Lake, not Wald Lake, sorry, Waterford, they both also took the ballots, or the proposal off the May ballot. One of them put it onto the August ballot, and the other one has decided to defer the decision for weeks, until they can decide what to do. So as Lisa said, I am going to vote the same way as she has indicated she is going, which is take it off the May ballot, and then vote no on August and November at this point in time. Thank you.
Cynthia?
Good morning. I want to say thank you to all of our clerks and our first responders, who are taking care of all of us. It's very clear to me that we must take the question off of the May ballot. To me, it's really not debatable. We need to respect and allow our community to pay attention to the urgency of the pandemic, and what needs to be the response. So that, to me, is not debatable. We just need to act on it, and remove it from the ballot. As far as when we would move the question till, I have spoken with our parents, who are part of our advocacy team, and we had a long conversation, and I've thought about this a great deal. I think that come September, I'm hoping our schools are back in session, and our administration, and all of our organization needs to be focused on how do we restore normalcy for our children, and educating our students. And so I think, and I think we have also tried to communicate with our community, we have $33 million of urgent needs. Those needs, the reason for those that need to expend those funds is because there are systems that need attention, and the longer that we wait, more of the funds will need to be spent in just keeping our old buildings as they are 1960s buildings. I think we are, we continue to need, have urgency about determining how to go forward and spending those funds wisely, and not needing to spend them a second time. So I think it's important for us to stay focused on our kids in the fall, and not be quick, and do our best between now and August in finding new strategies to inform our community, so that we can get this done in August, and be focused on our children come the fall. I'm done.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Okay. Am I on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So thank you, everybody who's attending the meeting today, under creative circumstances. Completely agree that we cannot hold this bond election in May for reasons already stated, not only for the public health risk, which is obviously paramount, but also the interruption to the democratic process by not having polling stations. I just, I really can't imagine conducting an election under those circumstances. I also completely agree that our bond initiative is urgent, for reasons that we've been talking about since January. I would very much like to see it go in August, but I do not feel that today is, I feel that today is premature to make that decision, also for reasons that my colleagues have already stated. There are only questions now and no answers, and we may find ourselves in the exact situation in August, as we are today. As I have said, the state of California has been put into household quarantine today, and, you know, we just don't know what the next few weeks bring. So my preference, I would like to see this go up in August, but my preference today is to not make the decision to do so until we have more information. I feel that it's very important for administration, we, the board, our political action committee, and our entire community to act as if this is going to go for a vote in August, and to be relentless, to the extent that we are feasible, under the current circumstances, to keep on with our informational and advocacy campaigns, respectively. Said that, I just want to give a shout out to all of our teachers and all of our students. This is very strange and disorienting. None of us have experienced this in our lifetime, so please hang in there. Thank you so much for maintaining educational efforts and excellence. Please read a book, please- Please read a book, please write down things, honor what you're thinking and feeling, let yourself process it, and please take a walk. Thank you.
Okay, before we vote, I could start reading some of the public comments. I know, Mark, you have a hard stop before we vote, but we do have some time. So can you just post up the first? And then I could always continue. I don't have a mouse or anything, but. Here we go.
While we're waiting for the public comment, I have a question. My understanding was that going from May to August adds a year of transition to our students, but going from August to say November, or maybe even a later date, whatever, leaving it up here, will not cause additional delays for our students in terms of, you know, the project completion in total. Is that correct?
Brian?
Morning. This is weird. So we talked about how there was really no difference between August or November. Then, as we refined the schedules and working with, you know, different groups, we knew it was really important to have a smooth transition. So we reprioritized our projects, and we were able to have the construction and for the reconfiguration the fall of '23, based on a May vote. We could still do that with an August vote. We have about three months of cushion in there. Going to November would push that transition to the fall of '24.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
All right, I'm going to start reading public comment. This is from Hope Garvis. "As one of the leaders of Bloomfield Forward, I strongly feel we should put off the May election. It's not risk, it's not risk anyone's health. There are so many unknowns here for the coming weeks and months. I feel we could put it off until August and hope for the best, but we will need to reevaluate in late May or early June to see if we should push it off again or remove it, depending on what is happening in the world. Focus needs to be on our health and the well-being of our community." Next is Macy Bolton. Her name is, okay, it's Ian Bolton. I know Macy Bolton. "While I am saddened that we're all going through this global pandemic, I see no other option but to postpone the May vote to August. The board unanimously supported the bond in January, and Bloomfield Forward has worked tirelessly to assist the district in getting information out to the community and gathering support. The momentum on our side to move the election to next available date, August." Next is Ella Wish. "My name is Ella Wish. I live at 4560 Walden Drive. I agree that removing it off the May ballot is our only option to ensure the safety of our community. I am hopeful that in August, things will be better and we can vote to pass the bond then. I think we should reevaluate closer to then." Paulina. Hello, my name is Paulina. I'll kill her, I know her. I'll just say Paulina. "Hello, my name is Paulina. I am a parent of the district of a first and third grader at Lompine and an eighth grader at West Hills. I am also an active community member as PTO co-president of Lompine, as well as an executive member of Bloomfield Forward. While I am saddened greatly by our current health crisis, and I know the uncertainty that we will face is terrifying, the only certainty we have is that $33 million of critical needs our buildings desperately need. I fully agree with moving off the May ballot, however, August will allow us to still meet our children's needs." Anything else? Okay, that's it, in terms of public comment.
Paul, can I make a quick amendment to my statement?
Yes, Howard.
Okay. By voting to put something on to a ballot, not only are you locking in, or not only are we locking in, the date of August or November, but we're also locking in the dollar figure of $200.2 million. As I said, we really haven't had a chance, or hadn't had a chance in January to look through the detail. Now that we have this opportunity over the next few weeks, it's possible we might even want to increase the amount if there are things that were missed or things that we might want to add to the bond. So by actually voting today, you're limiting that flexibility over the next few weeks. So I see no advantage of voting today to put it on to August. We can do that over the next few weeks or over the next month, and it just gives us more flexibility. Why, you know, why tie our hands at this point, given that we have the time? And let us work with administration, possibly changing numbers either within the $200 million or, you know, possibly even taking it up a certain amount. We're at 1.85 mils. I think that rounds up to two, so we could, you know, possibly take it to two mils, and it really wouldn't change our marketing aspect at all. So I see no reason why we need to make the decision today to put it on to August. I would say we defer that for another few weeks or a month and continue the conversation with administration."
Thanks, Howard.
And I'd like to add something, too, in terms of the discussion before we do put this to a vote. Based on what we just learned from Brian, I'm way less confident that I know enough details about the plan itself to be able to make a vote. I really thought I knew the ins and outs of the plan. I'm more confused than ever, so I'm uncomfortable making a vote on something that, as a board member, I don't even have all the details about.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, do we have a motion for the first point on pulling it off the May ballot?
Yes, I'll read the motion.
There were some more public comments.
There was there?
Was there?
Said it.
Other people popping up here.
Is there? Yeah, let's let's have these vote on the May.
I will make the motion. "Whereas, on January 30, 2020, the school district adopted a resolution approving and certifying a school improvement bond proposal, known as the proposal, to be included on the ballot for the special school election to be held on May 5, 2020. Whereas, after the proposal was approved and certified by the school district, it was submitted to the school district's election coordinator, that being the Oakland County clerk. Whereas, due to the COVID-19 crisis, the Secretary of State of Michigan recommended that school districts and other local units of government with proposals on the ballot for May 5, 2020 election date, consider withdrawing these proposals from the ballot for May 5, 2020 election date, and rescheduling the proposals for a future election date. And whereas, based on the recommendation of the Secretary of the State of Michigan, the school district desires to withdraw its prior approval and certification of the proposal and instruct the school district's election coordinator to remove the proposal from the ballot for the special school election to be held on May 5, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Bloomfield Health Schools, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, that the school district's previous approval and certification of the proposal, a copy of which is attached to this motion, are hereby withdrawn, and the school district's election coordinator is directed to remove the proposal from the ballot for the special school election to be held on May 5, 2020. Two, the superintendent or his designee are authorized and directed to submit this resolution to the school district's election coordinator on or before 5:00 p.m. on March 20, 2020. Three, the superintendent or his designee are further authorized to take any and all action required under Michigan election law and other guidance from the State of Michigan to effectuate the removal of the proposal from the ballot for the special school election to be held on May 5, 2020. All resolutions and parts of resolutions, insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution, are hereby rescinded."
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Okay, I'm going to call. Howard?
Yes.
Lisa?
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mark?
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Did I do Cynthia?
Cynthia? Cynthia?
Yes.
Okay, I am a yes. Passes 7-0. Okay, I'll continue with public comment. Meg Spence. "We are experiencing unprecedented times. This is no denying it. I fully support the vote to move the ballot from May to a later date. The fact of the matter, though, is that the currency of the buildings is not going away. The assessed critical need is not going away. I believe that what we can all agree upon is that we don't know what the near future will look like. We don't know how August will, how August will look compared to November. However, there are many items on the ballot for August." That just, okay. "Not just the bond, so I'm curious and hope that our township is devising a means of counting the vote, no matter what the situation. I see no reason not to push the vote to August and reevaluate before the deadline to move it." Aaron Berish. "My name is Aaron Berish, and I agree that moving it off the May ballot is the right option, given the public health crisis we are facing. I would like someone to address whether there are costs associated with putting it on the August ballot and having to remove it. If so, I am unsure why the board would not wait to see how this unfolds before making a decision regarding May or later." Natalie Finerty. "Hello, my name is Natalie Finerty. I would like to see the board take a wait-and-see approach until we see how this awful pandemic progresses. I would like to see the board wait and reassess. Thank you." That's all for public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion relative to the August election. "Whereas, the school district is contemplating undertaking various capital improvements to facilities within the school district, which include erecting, completing, equipping, and furnishing additions to school buildings and other facilities, which include multipurpose gymnasium, cafeteria, and auditorium cafeteria rooms, classrooms, secure entryways, an auditorium, and athletic facility additions, remodeling, equipping, re-equipping, furnishing, refurnishing school buildings, athletic fields, playgrounds, and other facilities, acquiring, preparing, developing, and improving sites for school buildings, athletic fields, playgrounds, and other facilities, erecting, completing, equipping, and furnishing a new transportation maintenance warehouse center, and the purchase of school buses, and acquiring and installing instructional technology, infrastructure, and equipment in school buildings and other facilities, collectively known as the projects. Whereas, the school district is of the opinion that in order to finance the projects, a bond proposal should be submitted to the electors at a special school election. Whereas, the school district is a Michigan General Powers School District operating under the revised school code as amended, and as such, the school district's elections are governed by Michigan election law, Act 116 Publix Acts of the State of Michigan, 1954, as amended, which is commonly known as the Michigan election law. Whereas, the school district desires to submit a bond proposal to the electors at a special school election to be held on August 4, 2020, which election will be conducted by the school district's election coordinator. Whereas, Michigan election law requires that the school district certify the ballot language for any proposals to be submitted for voter approval at an allowable election date due to the school district's election coordinator, not later than 4:00 p.m. on the 12th Tuesday before the election. And whereas, the school district desires to approve and certify the above-referenced bond proposal and to authorize the superintendent or his designee to submit the certified bond proposal to the school district's election coordinator. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Bloomfield Health Schools, County of Oakland, Michigan, that, one, the school improvement bond proposal attached here to its Exhibit A is hereby approved and certified and shall be submitted to the electors at a special school election to be held on August 4, 2020. Two, the superintendent or his designee are authorized to submit the above-referenced proposal to the school district's election coordinator on or before 4:00 p.m. on May 12, 2020, which is not later than the 12th Tuesday before the special election to be held on August 4, 2020. Three, the superintendent or his designee are further authorized to take any and all action required under Michigan election law with regard to the special school election to be held on August 4, 2020. Four, all resolutions and parts of resolutions, insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution, are hereby rescinded."
Do I have support?
Point of clarification, please. I know that there is. I know that there is no, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Yes.
I know that there is not a cost to the district for holding an election in August. Are there any charges that we know of for on and then needing to take it off within those deadlines?
Debbie, Jan? Is there a ca, there was a question of one of my board members during the discussion. Is there a cost to take it off the ballot if we decide to take it, take the August off the ballot in May?
The cost would be in how much work has been done to the point that it's removed from the ballot, because we send out, we are required to send out absentee ballot applications. Can I get?
Yeah, you can go on.
The cost would depend on what work had been done. We are required to send out absentee ballot applications, as well as our military and oversee voter applications, six weeks plus, 45 days in advance for military. So at the point that, depending on when it's taken off, there will be a cost on how much work has been done in the office and how many ballots have been sent, or ordered, actually. We do have to order the applications, and we do have to order the ballots, so there would be some cost.
But my understanding is there's other things that are on the ballot in August.
You know what? You're right. And I'm not, I apologize, I was like back there talking with Brian, so I apologize, I missed part of it. You're correct, there is that part that is already done. But the ballots, once they're printed, they're going to be printed with it on it. And Jan, do you know when, let me let, Jan has more experience with this, I'm going to let her answer.
Well, the applications would go out at the end of May for an August election, is when the applications would go out. And we would be getting the ballots sometime in the early month, sometime early in June. Ballots would go out at the, usually around the end of June for an August election. So there would be costs for the ballots.
No, I guess the question would be if we have a district in, let's say, by May 12th, let's say we had an emergency meeting May 9th, and we pulled it off the ballot, what would be the cost of us specific, considering there are other things on the ballot, of pulling it off?
There would be no cost at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, as long as it's before that, that May 12th date, or by that May 12th date.
Okay. We have a second. Just before Howard, for discussion, we have a motion and we have a second. Jackie seconded. Discussion? Howard?
Howard, can I ask a question of Jan, please?
Sure.
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
So the official dates are, we would have to file by May 12th. That's the deadline for putting something on the August ballot. And then the withdrawal date is June 20th.
No. No, Howard, Howard, the withdrawal date is May.
The absentee ballots would go out.
Howard, Howard, can you answer your question?
In terms of the email I sent to the board the other day, and Jan did clarify that, the withdrawal date is also May 12th. It is not June 20th. We would have to withdraw by May 12th.
That's right from the Director of Elections. May 12th is the last date, that's the last day to present it to the county and also the last day to withdraw it from the county.
Oh, I did not know that. Okay, so you're saying that it's not June 20th as we've been led to believe, but it really is May 12th?
Correct.
For both entry, putting it on to the ballot and withdrawal from the ballot.
Right. And just remember that the rest of the state is still considering how we're going to handle an August election as well, depending on this crisis. It's not just, it's not just, you know, the schools, it's, the whole state will have to consider how we might conduct that election depending on this crisis.
Any other discussion?
Having a discussion on it. What I'm hearing from both of our clerks is that there's a lot of doubt surrounding this August date. I, does it not bother any other board members that there's a very strong possibility we would be putting something on a ballot and then removing it? I don't know why we don't just wait. What's the rationale here? Am I missing it? I don't get it.
I think the doubt is just a universal doubt. I don't think it's, you know, we don't know what's coming, this is uncharted territory, and we don't know, so.
Her question was not to you, Debbie, it was to the other board members.
Any other question? Comments?
That we have a moment.
Second.
We don't have any to vote on us yet. Until we do. I don't have any to vote on this yet until we do have a discussion on it. I haven't heard one answer to the question. Why are we putting it on August?
Today.
Yeah, why are we deciding right now?
I think we all...
We have to do it by 12.
Lisa, we all made a five-minute... Up to a five-minute statement. We all... We're in discussion period.
Okay.
Okay, you had a question. I have no further...
I have a question that wasn't leading to the statement's main.
I personally have no further...
There's why it's a discussion.
I personally have no further...
I personally have no further comment.
Nor do I.
So you won't have a discussion about it?
We did have a discussion about it. I said what I thought. Everybody else said what they thought.
We're not discussing specifically waiting.
Does anyone else have any further discussion? Or any comments? Cynthia?
I would like to...
How... Howard?
Things that are in the bond proposal right now that are things that have been left out of the bond proposal. I would like to have discussions with administration about adding things to the bond. If we vote today, we are locking ourselves into $200 million. I would like to add in particular transportation. There are... We spend money... We spend money, many dollars on buying buses every year that comes out of our operating our general funds. There is no reason why we shouldn't be putting that into the bond. It is currently not in the 42-page package of the bond. I would like to add that to it. If we vote today, we are locking ourselves out of that for the next 30 years of not being able and having to purchase all of our buses out of the monies that should be going to the classroom and not to the bus, not to capital. Why in the world would we vote today when we can have two more months to vote on this? There is no reason for... There is no reason to vote yes at this point.
Any other discussion? We have a motion. We have a second. Roll call. Howard?
No.
Lisa?
Lisa?
No.
Jennifer?
Jennifer?
No, with the caveat that I want to vote yes on this, but not today.
Cynthia?
Cynthia?
Yes.
Mark?
Mark?
Yes.
Jackie?
Jackie?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes for three. We can go to second on the agenda. Dave, in terms of just presenting how we're going to be handling board meetings going further?
First virtual board meeting for us. In general, as you can kind of see, this is the platform we're working with. This is a platform we've been using in the district for a number of years now. We will continue with this at the moment. We're going to be tweaking. Obviously, we want to work on layouts, how we're going to deal with our public comment, make sure that's easy. But a couple of key features to note. One, the closed captioning. As you noticed, as you mentioned, Margaret, I appreciate that. It is electronic. So when we say "bond," we need to enunciate very clearly that it's not "bomb." It's "bond." And so those are some of the things that we'll have to get... We'll have to deal with with this new, you know, virtual meeting. The other thing that's important to understand... So if you think about this as your pipe that comes to your house, internet, and whether it's in the district, outside of the district, at your house, there is one pipe and it's got enough bandwidth for it. Let's just say it's 100. But we've optimized Comcast, AT&amp;T, the district. We've optimized that experience, that bandwidth, for the most that you use. For example, most of it's download speeds. And so this... So we can stream Netflix, we can binge watch. So it's all the download. But now that we're doing a lot more videoconferencing, which is going back and forth, you need a little bit more upload speed. And so networks across... This is including us, are trying to reconfigure that and rebalance that bandwidth. It's the same pipe, but we want to make sure that our download and upload speeds are getting a little bit different balance so we can help everybody be virtual. Luckily, we have the technology to do that. It's just more... It's just a little bit harder than just flipping a switch. And I think the last thing to note, we've been watching the statistics on this meeting. We've had over 44 people who have chimed in or come into the meeting. We have seven milliseconds of latency, meaning that in the return from their video, it's very low, which is very, very positive experience. But as you know, with all video conference, we're going to get those ups and downs, and we may have to repeat ourselves. And we are going to here work on trying to improve this process a little bit as well.
Okay. And I know some of my colleagues have brought this up. So going forward, I'm going to leave it up to the committee chairs, and then I'll reassess based on, you know, what we need to talk about. We do have an upcoming March 26, so we should assume unless, you know, we go ahead and cancel it, that we're going to have this completely virtual. And then same thing with committee meetings. So just... So Dave, if you can just prepare it. We have a couple of upcoming meetings, 26, and I think there was a policy. So again, leave it up to the chairs. And then I will talk with Pat and my colleagues in terms of deciding what's on the agenda for the 26th, you know, whether or not we're going to move forward and we'll go with this virtual platform. All right?
Dave here. Probably have a question.
Yep. Yep.
Dave, I think it's kind of ironic that as we're talking, you know, we have a special meeting, as Mark said, for the purpose of discussing basically making an emergency last minute column, what to do about the May election, which has a bond about our facilities. I think the focus needs to be, at least now, on the exact opposite, our virtual capacity. I have two kids and I've heard from a ton of the community. I think we're doing an admirable job as everybody across the nation is sort of railing around trying to educate students as best we can with what we have available to us. But the interactive piece is the best. I mean, being able to conduct a meeting this way is really close to the next best thing to being able to be there. What capacity do our teachers have at this point to be able to do that for our students? I'm really more concerned with the technology available to teachers and their ability to be able to virtually teach than I am about board meetings or administrative meetings. Can you talk about that?
Happy to. So...
One is, yeah, I was kind of saying that we've been tooled, right, to be in class. And so retooling that's going to take a little time. But technology-wise, we're fairly robust as a district. It's just really now moving our teachers to those online platforms and how... And building out that engagement and the support around that. Because many of you know, if you're an elementary teacher, you are playing, working on motor skills. Those are things virtually are going to be different. And so you have to retool that. You have to think that through. That's not one of those things that our teachers or any of us can just immediately switch. It's not just a substitution to put it online. In addition, and we were... I was looking at our stats last night. We had over 2,940-some Google Hangouts that came from our domain. That was just in the last week. So that... So I want you to think about over 2,000. Now, some of those, we opened it up so our students could also stock... Talk to each other. So we're seeing some of that. But I'll give you an example. My two girls are in fifth grade at BH. Both of their teachers had online Google meets yesterday that they met for over a little over 30, 40 minutes and then continued on with their friends. So their friends, excuse me, could continue to talk and connect and talk about their classwork. That was huge for my family, and we will hope that we're going to start seeing that more and more and more. But understand that we, as a tech team, and we've been working on this, is trying to figure out how do we support our teachers and then our families, too, in creating those routines. And this is a work in progress, but we have been... Literally, this has consumed us constantly about... About every second or so, how we're going to do this. I hope that kind of answered your question, Lisa.
Yeah, it did. And I totally agree with the assessment of, you know, different curriculum and different capabilities, different objectives, depending on the age of the students. Obviously, virtual and interactive teaching looks different in an elementary than it would in high school. I have high schoolers and I can tell you that the interaction was very important to them as well emotionally and for their mental state. It is... I really had no idea the impact that it would have, but vital. So to the extent that we can support teachers and focus our energy on being able to make the technology work for them, that would be my priority.
Yeah, and I can... One of the big other challenges, and I want you to... Everybody understand this, we're trying to figure this out ourselves, is now... And we do this to a certain extent, but now that we're going to be pushing much further, we're relying on all of our families to be their tech support at home to a certain extent, right? How do their routers? How do their... All their devices connect? How do they get apps? We're helping supplement. We're trying to give more guidance on that. But this is going to be... These are uncharted waters for all of us, and we're going to have to try to navigate the best we possibly can. And so as you do, talk to our community members, try to let them know we're working hard at this. These are the problems that we, as a tech team, solve almost every day. This is just a different one and a little bit larger scope, but we're going to keep working at it.
All right. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you very much. As a parent, really, thank you. You're doing just a great job. I know it's unprecedented. I know it's... We're all doing the best we can, and I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I ask a question to David?
Too. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you, Jackie. Yes, Jennifer? David?
So David, real briefly, I'll wait till the clock is over.
I guess it's 10 o'clock.
More than 10 o'clock.
So...
Just for the mechanics of it, so do the teachers then reach out to you with a, you know, "I want to use this kind of platform" and, you know, IT then facilitates that? Or is it more like a uniform thing where the grade levels or even IT is recommending a certain platform for the interactions?
Sure. It's a couple of combinations. So that...
In terms of a video chat, well, let me... Let me start over. So one of our IT, our technical shared values for the district is to provide an open platform, a network, the support for teachers to find the tools that work best for them. So it's not a top-down, but it's a bottom-up. And that's something that we did actually in 2013 as an entire district. And so we still following it. However, in this particular situation, we have... We have... We've messaged out to our teachers and our staff to use the Google Hangouts Meet that we have as part of our normal platform. We're not saying not to use other platforms if they find that, but we won't be able to support that at the current scale. They know that. They understand that this is nothing new for them. And so we work through those things. And again, our tech team's there to help, so we'll do that. So let me answer the other piece of that question. How do they make contact? Our teachers know that they call our help desk and or put in a help desk ticket. Our families, we've also messaged out to them, they have an email that they can submit that they can get some additional tech support as well. And so right now, as we're all trying to... We're working on two ticket systems or two inputs of requests and needs. It's just taking us a little longer to get to everybody at this moment. But did that answer your question, Jennifer?
Jennifer?
So right now...
Let me recap it. Let me just recap it this way. Google Hangouts is our base meeting system for this interactivity. It also integrates with our Google Classroom, that vast majority of our... Part of our secondary and part of our upper L uses. We also have our clever portal platform that our students can log into, and that is K through 8 as well. So there are a number of things, and many of the families and students have tried or done these. Now it's just going that extra step to do it a lot more.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for David?
Paul, you cut in and out earlier when you were going through the future meetings. On the... On March 26, we had a... Had a board meeting, but it is marked on the calendar as canceled. Is that back on the rolls?
Did we cancel? We can't... I can't... We canceled the meeting.
So I think we're going to move over.
With our April meetings, and I think there may be a March 30, and that's up to Lisa, her policy meeting. It's up to her at this point. So I think the March 26 meeting is canceled going forward. We'll be going virtual, leaving it up to the committee chairs for their committees, and I'll have discussion, you know, just assuming all board meetings will be going forward after the March 26 virtually until further notice.
Okay, so my question would be, number one, why would we cancel the March 26 meeting considering the virtual process that we just did today is worked pretty well? And that's, you know, a week from today, so we still have time to put that back on the calendar, number one. And number two, question is, on April 2, we had a board workshop. It is currently not marked for cancellation. Is that still on the agenda?
I'll get back to my fellow col... You know, I need to go through what we're going to talk about, who would be there. So I will get back to all of you in terms of the April meeting. But the March 26 meeting was canceled before we went. We got the governor's word in terms of going virtual, so that meeting's... Yes, it is canceled. Any other questions? Cynthia?
I just want to say, I want to say thank you to Paul. I know you've put in tremendous amount of time and effort to try to help us keep moving forward and to support our administration. I think we all need to give ourselves and the whole organization grace to be able to be flexible in these times that we just don't know from day to day. And so thank you for all the work that's being done for feeding the students who need to be fed and for figuring out how to keep us moving forward and taking care of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Any other comments before adjourn the meeting? Okay, thank you. Meeting adjourned. I'll be in contact.